...order of the special common council meeting of January 31st, 2011. Our agenda tonight is to consider amending municipal code, chapter 202, signs ordinance number 2-11. Danny, do you want to start us off?
The ordinance was referred to the common council by plan commission in November, I believe, and then there was some considerations by the council on December 6th, which ordinance was amended. Also, the common council asked us to take a look at the nonprofit organizational signs that could maybe off premises, if there could be some allowances for longer periods of time. And Kathy's memo addresses that, but what after my opening comments, perhaps if Kathy can review her memo on two particular issues, one being content neutrality and why it's so important to have that consideration in our ordinance, and secondly, the off-premise signage and why the limitation of off-premise signage even for nonprofit organizations is important to the ordinance itself as it's currently proposed. However, there are two sheets that was proposed or given to you tonight had yellow highlights. One of them was for a change, we just had to change a reference. It says temporary signs as listed in 207, except temporary on-premise spatial event signs as proposed by 202. That reference was incorrect, and we, so we changed that to the correct reference, which would be section C, then temporary off-premise spatial event directional signs. So those references have now been corrected. The second one is on page 23, and we end the discussion off-premise spatial event directional signs. Kathy and I discussed this today, this is new language. We talked about a permit request comes into the city for the directional signs for spatial events such as a tour of homes, maybe hot air fare may be another one, where you've got a short-term spatial event, but it's on multiple locations within the city. And we feel that there is some latitude the city can give to allow directional signs, help facilitate the public getting from venue to venue within those spatial events. But we added, one of them is, is that the signs would have to be on private property unless it can be demonstrated in the permit request, that it's impractical to put them on private property. But Kathy and I discussed and are suggesting to add factors to be considered in determining whether placing a sign on private property shall include but not be limited to whether private property owners will allow the sign on private property, two, slope of the property that the proposed location of the sign, three, visibility concerns regarding the signed-in traffic visibility. So there may be reasons why the sign may not be, may not be practical to put it on the private property, and these are some of the factors that the city can give consideration to, to allow those directional signs for short-term spatial community events, directional signs for spatial community events. So that's suggesting language. Kathy did provide a memo talking about the legal aspects. Also, you should have received a memorandum from the municipality league of cities that also talks about content neutrality and ingredients or content assigned ordinances that cities need to be particularly careful about addressing due to recent court considerations throughout the United States. So at this time, I'd like to turn over to Kathy so she can explain her memorandum, and perhaps we can talk about any specific type of provisions of the ordinance that are also here from the public in regards to what's being proposed.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you all got a copy of my memo, and I found this memo prepared by the League of Minnesota Cities, which is an organization comparable to the League of Wisconsin municipalities but in Minnesota. I gave it to you because it's a nice succinct plain English explanation of the constitutional issues, and so I thought that would give you kind of the main rules regarding, oh, it looks like you didn't get the back page.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, did you? Oh, okay.
Yep.
I mean, basically, I think you all know that sign regulation is a regulation on speech or expression, and that's why it calls into the Constitution of the US and State of Wisconsin applies. And basically, municipalities cannot regulate content. It's supposed to be content neutral. You can regulate size, location, now we have, you know, electronic, think time, manner, place. Those are the types of regulations you can have. Over the years, there has been a distinction between commercial and non-commercial, and the courts have generally held that non-commercial, i.e. religious, political, ideological, that type of speech is your most favored or most protected speech. They have affirmed some restrictions on commercial speech, although the law is inconsistent on that. There's situations where they find, well, this, that it is a violation of the Constitution to that particular regulation of commercial speech. That occurs mostly in situations where the commercial sign really is no different than a non-commercial sign, and all other circumstances being equal, there's no reason to differentiate between the two. But there's this kind of historical principle that they will look at commercial regulations, I think with a little more of an eye towards giving, looking at the reasons behind the rules, and it's probably too simple to say to give the municipality the benefit of the doubt. It's definitely too simple, but there is that distinction that's developed in the law, and it still exists to some extent. At the last meeting, the comments we heard primarily had to do with two things, at least my understanding, or in the sign ordinance that was causing the main concerns was the prohibition of signs in the right-of-way and prohibition of, or pretty strict regulation of off-premise special event signs. And so Danny and I, in kind of going over this, we went back to the plan commission, you know, discussed what, what was the plan commission trying to achieve in putting those two regulations in the sign ordinance? And with respect to no signs in the right-of-way, the plan commission was quite concerned about the aesthetics, the visual clutter, the proliferation of signs, and that has occurred in the city, and really wanted to protect the right-of-way. And that is an area where it's really important, in my opinion, to keep, I mean, those are valid, legitimate, recognized concerns, first of all, that are a sound basis for regulating signs, aesthetic proliferation of signs, avoiding visual clutter. But that's an area where, well, you know, really, commercial versus non-commercial, it's the signs in the right-of-way regardless of what they're advertising that are the problem. And courts look kind of skeptically at ordinances where you have a prohibition, and then there's a laundry list of exceptions to that prohibition. It calls into question whether the municipality is really concerned about the visual clutter or whether it's concerned more about the type of signs in the right-of-way. And I feel that if the city does want to prohibit signs in the right-of-way, which is a, you know, certainly a worthy goal, the plan commission thought it was important, then it's important to keep that prohibition quite exception-free to as much as possible, and that's what we've tried to do. Through the course of this, we did look at a lot of different sign ordinances. Danny's probably looked at more than I have, and I've looked at quite a few. Most of the sign ordinances now that are, have been adopted within, you know, relatively recently are, at least that we reviewed, are prohibiting signs in the right-of-way. It's clean, it achieves the objectives. And abutting property owners can, if it's going to be a temporary sign for some non-commercial cause or organization, they can certainly put them on their own property, and there is some, not only does it, you know, get them out of the right-of-way, but I'm guessing that it will also achieve the goal of people complying and removing their signs and being more, just removing their signs, doing what they are telling the property owners they will do, simply because now the control is with that property owner who abuts the right-of-way. Before, when the sign was in the right-of-way, they didn't really have the authority to go in and remove signs that had been there for some period of time. So both constitutionally and to achieve the objective, I just think it's very important that that prohibition, if the council wants to, you know, thinks that is a worthy objective for the city's sign ordinance, I think you need to keep that prohibition pretty solid with virtually, with very few very narrow exceptions. And the exceptions that we did put into the ordinance came out of the last meeting. It says multi-event, or multi-location special event, where the sign's purpose really is to help traffic get around to several locations where some sort of special event is occurring within the city.
Can I ask a question about that specifically?
Yep.
So we're talking about things like the Christmas tour of homes, potentially?
Yes.
It's a multi-location event? What about just the tour of homes? That goes on, you know, throughout the fall and the spring?
Yeah.
You could say it's a multi-location. I just want to get clarification.
Well, it would be within the city. I mean, certainly, there's many homes within the city that would. But the only time that that, it's not just a blanket for any multi-location special event, it has, there has to be a finding that it's not practical to put it on private property. I think they need to certainly find appropriate places for the signs and talk to the property owners. The other thing is, it has to be related to, you know, directing traffic through the city, so.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I have a question about Laurie.
I meant to say tour, I meant to say parade of homes.
Parade of homes, I knew what you meant, though. But isn't there a difference in that the Christmas tour of homes in Hudson is, Kim's here, is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, which is your nonprofit, correct? So there's a nonprofit, and parade of homes is, I believe, a for-profit enterprise.
That isn't, the special, the multi-location special event exception isn't just restricted to non-commercial. And the chamber is, while the chamber is nonprofit, I don't know, you know, there's an argument to be made that not all its events are non-commercial. Many are, there's a difference within the chamber, there's the tourism, and then there's the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not certain whether the strictly Chamber of Commerce type events would be considered non-commercial.
Depends on what they raise money for.
Mm-hmm. So would the parade of homes be able to apply for a special event, like each?
No, no.
I mean, would that be completely exempt then because they're, as Scott pointed out?
I believe they're for-profit.
Yeah, I think you're obviously right about that.
Oh, I'm sure the parade of homes is. Yeah, it is, we have not limited it to non-commercial special events. I mean, that can be done.
Essentially, the parade of homes is an open house event, and what we regulate is a day, it's like any air open house in the city of Hudson, they can go to the property owner, ask for it to be placed so many hours before. Parade of homes would be treated the same way, they can put it up, but they aren't going to keep them up all week, have to get them up, take them down. I, you know, I fought back and forth with the parade of homes representatives for a number of years, you know, part of the problem in March, they put them up as snowbanks, two days later, they're laying over, they're laying in, they're laying in the public right-of-way, they're laying in the streets and so forth. And, you know, they have a responsibility to the community, just like any air open house. And I got to say, the people, the realtors in Hudson over the last few or four years have done an outstanding job getting their signs up, short duration, getting them down as soon as the open houses. They've done a very good job, and our expectations with the parties that are participating in parade of homes would have to meet the same standard.
Those are essentially just open houses for homes that are for sale. So maybe that wouldn't even qualify as a special event under the, they might argue it, but, yeah.
Open house is not a special event either.
Well, we have a more specific provision in the ordinance for open house type signs.
Okay.
And it is related to sale of property. It's different than special events.
Catherine, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Well, yeah, the other concern and objective of the plan commission was to maintain the prohibition on off-premise advertising. That has been in the ordinance for a long time. And again, it's the same idea. You want to have as few exceptions as possible because the exceptions, if they start to swallow up the rule, it's just going to be invalidated. And so we, the ordinance retains that general prohibition of off-premise advertising. There have been cases with respect to real property, validating signs, selling real property. It's kind of part of the property rights of the property owner. And so the ordinance does set up some directional signs for open houses, that's one exception. And again, those are off the right-of-way, these, these two prohibitions kind of intersect. And then we have the temporary off-premise signs for non-commercial special events. That came out of the comments from the last meeting, and we tried to think of, okay, how can we, you know, support this as a non, it kind of is a content regulation, but it's very narrow. And I think some of the reasons I put in the memo are that, you know, very often these organizations don't have a premise that's suitable for advertising. The number is likely to be few because it's limited to special events, they're not in the business of putting on special events. It's different from commercial advertising where the business being advertised is in that business. And so we just felt we can make some, you know, differentiate between the two sufficient to maybe allow that type of off-premise sign. It would still be out of the right-of-way, and it would be limited, and that's the other reason why we wanted it limited to just 48 hours before the event and remove them 24 hours after.
I thought we had changed that. I thought we voted and changed it to one week.
There had been discussion, I don't know.
I think it was changed officially, I think you meant, to the 48 hours. I don't remember actually doing it, the council voting on it, I, I didn't double-check that.
Danny, do you remember? We discussed it, I do remember. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
We went from four hours to 48 hours.
That's what I thought. Okay. Then I remember, I'm remembering, Ron.
There wasn't a special one in one week, but.
Okay, I'm remembering, Ron.
Part of my conversations with Kathy, that I was trying, excuse me Kathy, I was fighting devil's advocate on what her premise was as far as the short duration of time, and we went, you know, we had conversations back and forth in regards to, you know, 48 hours or a longer period of time, and Kathy and I finally agreed to not undermine the consideration of having off-premise signs as a basis for, of our sign ordinance, we had limited to as reasonably shorter period of time as possible. Now, the reason 48 hours was proposed.
So that we can, you know, say, look, the general rule is no off-premise advertising, we're trying to keep the exception as narrow and focused to as possible, not to undermine and have a proliferation of signs.
Can I ask a question on the timeframe of 48 hours? There's one section we have, and I'm assuming it's because of non-commercial versus commercial, but there's one section on page 22 where it says, number four says that signs shall be placed no sooner, what we're talking about right now, no sooner than 48 hours before, and then removed within four hours after a non-commercial special event. And then on the, what we, the sub, the new page we have here, which I just don't remember what pa, oh, I'm sorry, page 23, the next page over, it says that signs may be erected no sooner than 24 hours before and must be removed within 24 hours after. Is there a reason for the difference in those hours, and can we make it consistent between the two? Because I just.
That was the directional sign that could poss, special event directional sign that could possibly go in the right-of-way. I think we were trying to really keep that.
Well, you know, considerations, something like hot air fare, parade of homes, you know, there are two, two or three, tour homes, excuse me, two or three day events that, you know, at the end of that, and then they'd have until the next morning, basically get out and take their signs down.
Page 20, 23, right. So, so four hours after a non-commercial event is?
Where is that again?
On page 22 to bottom, bottom paragraph, the very bottom paragraph, number four.
Oh, okay.
I just don't understand why.
Well, I mean, well, I, basically, open house signs would be one example, and the realtors have been very good about once the open houses are closed. This provision probably applies more to the garage sales, and, you know, where it's extended four hours or extended for some longer period of time, but it certainly shouldn't be more than 24 hours.
Correct.
If the city's going to give the courtesy to the people who put up garage sale signs, they even have them out there, then, you know, those people that put the signs out, I'd give this courtesy and return to the city of Hudson to get them down in a reasonable period of time.
Okay.
I guess the question is, is four hours reasonable or 24 hours is reasonable?
Right, I just, I just want to understand exactly what, why we had a difference, you know, for confusion, if there's going to be confusion between the public, within the public or not, or if it's going to be very clearly stated for them, then, you know.
Catherine, do you have any more?
I think that was pretty much it, unless there's other questions, but those are the main issues that came out of the last meeting that we tried to address as much as we felt appropriate within the concerns expressed by the plan commission.
Would the council like to hear from any of the public first? And then we can, then we'll take our business up. Is there anyone from, is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Anybody from the public would like to speak, if you'd like to come to the podium and state your name and address, please?
Kim Schaefer from River Falls, 851 Glen Meadow Street. I have a small business here in town. We're inside the, the old clinic, so we have no frontage, we have no big window, we have no place to put a sign that says I'm there. I've been using a sandwich board out on the curb to say that we're open, and that the people can come in. Am I not going to be able to do this anymore?
Which building?
We're at 226 Locust Street.
Well, you'd be able, you'd be able to have a sandwich board out there. What we are allowing is, but the signs, if they're going to be on the public right-of-way, if the building's back from the public right-of-way a little bit, then you just have to put it on the private property. If there's no room to put it on the right-of-way, then the sign has to go against the building so it doesn't encumber the sidewalk. So the signs have, they can have a sign, you just have to put it against the building.
So we're not able to put it out on the curb anymore?
You can't put it out on the curb.
Okay.
But you can, excuse me, you can, you can have the sign, the sandwich board up against your building.
As long as there's, what, five feet between the edge of the sandwich board and the edge of the sidewalk?
Correct.
If the sidewalk's wide enough.
That was the other exception.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to address this? Cordy?
Cordy Knutson from 901 Gerard Street. I've got a question for the city attorney. What courts have had rulings on these issues, have been in this area or other areas of the country?
Well, US Supreme Court, which, as I said, it's, it's relating to constitutional rights under the US Constitution primarily, so it's been primarily US Supreme Court decisions, also federal, or Federal Court of Appeals decisions.
Okay.
But the main ones are the Supreme Court, and they're, they make the law.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Ruth Peterson, I'm with the Hudson Hot Air Fair, 735 11th Street South. So I'm reading this that because of our event, we can put the directional signs, you know, put signs to direct people to our event. This is how I'm reading this, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so you would have to apply to the city for permission, we have an understanding where the sign would have to be at, when, when the date of the death, when they're going to be placed up. Yes, you know, I would consider hot air fare a multiple-location event that's special to the city, so in my opinion, yes.
And how much ti, ahead of time do you need this?
Well, not for next week.
Well, I can.
You don't have to worry about it for this week.
Oh, good, thank you very much.
One year. One year, you got a year to plan for it. All right.
I'm Laura Gray. I live at Crowe View Apartments, and I'm concerned about the garage sale, and what is going to be our limit on garage sale signs, or laws or rules or whatever?
Centered provision for off-premise spatial events, we are considering garage sales under the non-commercial spatial events. You can have a maximum of one sign per lot for, but then you can go, you can go to a private party, ask permission to have a sign off the premises, four square feet is the maximum, which is two, four square feet, two by two, I think that's pretty much, that's pretty standard sign for most, most garage sales. Place no sooner than 48 hours prior to the event, and taken down, well, the discussion was where it's four hours or where it's going to be.
No, if we have the garage sale on Saturday, or Friday and Saturday, we can put them up like Thursday night before the sale, and then what we usually do is pick them up right after our sale before we even close the sale out, you know?
That's what, that's what we're looking for.
That's what we're looking for, yeah.
And you understand they have, they can't be in the boulevard, they have to be in somebody else's yard.
You have to ask, you have to be placed, you can't put them on the public right-of-way, you have to put them on private property with permission of the private property owner.
Right.
Danny, can you clarify that between, you know, is it coming from 10 feet from the curb, 25 feet in from the center line? And if it is, how many on that one lot? Let's say corner of 11th and Cooley.
Well, we're not saying it has to be a limit of any, you know, basically, your first question, right-of-way.
Yeah, it said in one.
Two signs in the multifamily business districts and industrial districts.
And in our one, it's one sign.
Yep.
Okay, so you're limiting the only one.
First company.
One per parcel. So you can't, you won't have a, someone's single-family lot covered with garage sale signs. They've got it one per parcel.
I think what Randy's saying, you know, there's some corners where that property owner's going to be approached by multiple, particularly from May 31st on until middle of July. So I mean, right now, I mean, maybe it's something we need to talk about, but one is the current.
That's what.
One is in the resident, just the R1 and two.
Two in the commercial, yeah.
Residential.
Two in the multi-resident, multifamily and the business.
Now, the issue of the right-of-way, we have a variety of whiffs of right-of-way. It's very common for if, there's so many ifs, ands, and buts in regards to right-of-ways. If the street is generally built in the middle of the right-of-way, with a 36-foot street and a 66-foot right-of-way, you normally have about 15 feet back from the curb to where the property line is at. Older parts of town where sidewalks are in place, you put them on. are in place, you put them on the house side of the sidewalk, anything in the boulevard is on the public right-of-way. There's some issues, you can go up the top of this hill, I'd almost guarantee you the curb is built on the private property. So, I mean, there's...
In layman's terms for the general public, what's a rule of thumb, ten feet in from the curb?
Thirteen to fifteen feet. However, Kathy wanted to put a provision in there, I insisted it not go in 'cause I don't want a general note to become public policy on where the right-of-way is at. I mean, and it's, you know, if they wanna call us, talk to us where the public right-of-way is, generally, we can tell them or give them, at least, you know, keep it back. But in some cases, uh, somebody may have the right to put it closer than thirteen feet, as long as it's on the private property. And I guess I don't wanna take that consideration away from that person either.
Kind of segues in, well, let me answer, let me ask, so we have an opportunity to change how many signs go on one corner, but you're regulating it to one per parcel?
Correct.
In a commercial res, or a commercial zone?
Residential. Residential.
Two on, in the commercial districts and industrial.
So, of all the garage sales we have, the way this is written right now, there's only two garage sales that could be on one corner at any given time.
And some of those commercial...
Actually, one in the R-one district.
In the R-one district. Now, some of those commercial businesses may take up the policy that allow none on their private property.
Which I think you'll find that people are gonna start doing that.
I think the reason behind the restriction is to be consistent with the goal of preventing visual clutter and proliferation of signs.
Well, let me clarify, 'cause we always have these fancy words people don't get. So, you're saying that the commercial owner on a corner, let's say, Commercial, Eleventh and Cooley?
Mm-hmm.
They can put multiple signs?
Or two.
Two.
Not multiple?
Two.
Two.
That's it.
Or none, if they decide not to put any up there.
Within his property if they ask permission.
Correct.
I have, for, like Taco John's on the corner there, if I got permission from them that I could put it on that corner, it has to be four feet back, right?
It has to be on the private property and that's what...
Oh, that's private property.
No, it's not. No. Not, no, the, the property line's farther than four foot back from the curb there, maybe...
People that have garage sales may, living on that, they may go around just to force them down.
Well, I, I, you know, and I appreciate that comment. I think Kathy and I talked, Kathy and I clearly talked about those issues before making these recommendations. Again, part of the whole premise here is, do we allow so many off-premise garage, or sales signs that we undermine our ordinance, and that's the basis?
What's the right-of-way at that corner? Is it fifteen feet?
No, it's not fifteen, it's probably closer to nine to ten.
Okay, so ma'am, it would have to be nine feet in on that corner, or ten feet in?
Person doesn't have a chance, I mean, we've had these for years in Hudson, and I've never seen anybody get an accident because of sign. I don't care if it's commercial, it's whatever.
Well, and I, you know, I've cleaned a lot of signs off of streets.
And I know you picked them up and saw a lot.
I've cleaned a lot of signs out of, um, snow, snow piles and those considerations where they could potentially become, if a sign lays on a street, car runs over, it's a liability issue for the City of Hudson. That's the reason we had in our previous garage sales, that the signs had to be three feet back from the curb, and nearly nobody paid attention to that provision.
Well, a year ago, I, or two years ago, I was talking about it, and I suggested having the people come to the city and getting a permit to have that garage sale out there and pay so much for it, and if they didn't pick it up, then they would be fined, and the city would get the money for it. But it was never followed through, like I was in back forty somewhere.
Well, I did discuss that with the city attorney, I just think that's, uh, to bog down our legal system on that type of, uh, of legality, to me, is a waste of time.
Well, and it's also, I mean, another goal is to have, you know, minimize the cost of enforcement in the city. And it is costly to have someone going out and citing, and you don't always know where the sign is, or who owns it, or how long it's been there. And then you have to write a citation, then you get the city attorney involved in enforcing it and prosecuting it, and it's a cost.
Can I ask a question? How are they going to enforce all this with all the signs that people put out there? Are they gonna go up to that person, take the sign and say, okay, you had the sign there, you're gonna be fined for that?
No, we'll just remove the sign if it's illegal.
I don't understand how you're gonna enforce that many signs, whether it's business, whether it's garage sales, whether, whatever.
Well, that's part of the challenge of this type of ordinance.
Well, I think there was gonna be a fair amount, and we have tried both through the Plan Commission and the council meetings and on the website to have an education process so that people are aware that there's this new ordinance, are generally aware of what the rules are, and if they have any questions, they can certainly call the city. Um, but that's one thing about having them, you know, any sign in the right-of-way unless it fits in with those very narrow exceptions, is going to be, uh, in violation of the ordinance, and the city can just plain remove them. The other, can I just finish one? The, the reason for requiring names to go on signs is so that there is some basis and some ability to enforce. But we're hoping people will comply with the ordinance.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? Kim?
Um, Kim Heineman from the Hudson Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. I just wanted to thank you for your reconsideration of the special event ordinance part, and thank you for the modifications that you're suggesting. So, that'll be very helpful.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, at that, at this point, we're going to close the public comment, and, uh, council, let's hear your input.
You know, segueing into the cost, and as much as we're all looking at every section of our budget, and as we go into the next budget cycle, we're sitting here trying to make savings, and now all of a sudden, we're gonna tax your department, uh, the city inspector's department, and now we're gonna have to pay somebody to go around and enforce this law. I'm, uh, I'm as concerned as you are, Laura, with, with the garage sale thing and impeding the efforts that we have, or someone has to go and make a couple dollars. I understand the due diligence that you've done, Danny, and thank you for a job well done. I don't see how we're gonna get around making the general public happy with restricting garage sale signs, not to mention the Lions Club. Now, I don't know if we've gotten into that yet.
Well, Randy, I thi, I think the issue comes in as either we allow them in public right-of-ways or we don't. I don't think, I think it's a yes or no issue. And if you wanna have our city, and I'll use the word polluted, with signs on every street corner, political signs, any kind of signs you want, I think it'll be a mess. And that's what we're trying to avoid. And if you've ever been in a city that allows that, it, it's, it's awful. And I think, you know, unless this, I, I just think we need to have something. And we're, our hands are tied here. It isn't that we can say we'll let, we'll let these, these signs be here, and the other ones, we can't. It's either yes or no, and we have to follow the, the ruling. Yes, Scott?
Sorry, um, I believe, I'd like, uh, what I would like to discuss is a possible solution to that problem.
Can I ask a question before you go?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, you mentioned something about it's going to be a problem. I'm curious, what's changed between the last year and this year? What are you seeing as a problem that's gonna hit us this summer? What's changed?
What's changed? If you allow that all signs can go out, we can have political signs in our right-of-way, and I just don't think that's the right thing.
Well, what's changed in what we've had for many, many, many years, and now that would force that to occur?
Because it's either, we're changing our ordinance right now. So, either we're gonna allow it or not allow it.
But right now, we allow it. My, my...
No, we don't. We do not allow.
Selectively, we've...
Yes, we've done selective, but we do not allow political signs in the right-of-way. Do we, Danny? Right, now?
But that's not an enforceable provision, and that's why it hasn't been enforced. The ordinance as it stands now allows some in the right-of-way, i.e. garage sales, but it doesn't allow political signs, and that is just reversed of what the case law...
It's not defensible.
No, it's not defensible. So, for the past, I don't know how long, it's basically not been enforced because it's been unenforceable.
Okay, Scott, does that answer your question?
Somewhat, but keep going. Go ahead.
I recognize the need to get rid of some signs that would seem to be temporary, that seemed to stay there and stay there and stay there, and are, are objectionable. I am having real trouble with Laura's point. Um, you know, garage sale signs are part of Americana, and, uh, I, I don't object to them as much as some other signs. Since we cannot make rulings based on content, we have to stay away from that entirely. In fact, we shouldn't even be using the word advertising for the memo from the League of Cities in Minnesota, just say signs, because advertising kind of has a denotation of commercial as opposed to non-commercial. We're not making any judgments on that. I'm wondering if the council would consider this instead. What we can control is the span of time, and there are certain elements in, there are certain sign makers who want their signs to stay up for a long period of time, such as, I'm just gonna pick one out, you know, like, we buy ugly houses. You know, they want that sign to be there forever with their phone number. I don't know the company, but there are other companies like that who want their signs in the right-of-way, and they would like them to stay there for a long, long time. Danny has had to go around picking these signs up and getting rid of them. Um, I believe that if we were to say instead, you can be in the right-of-way during May thirty-first to, you know, whatever, October first, whenever the garage sale business ends, and it can only be from Thursday night to Saturday at four PM. Now, the people who want to put up signs that they want to stay there forever, including political signs, they're not gonna, they're not gonna put them up, 'cause they're just gonna come take them down again, or get fined. And I believe that if we make it a content neutral, which it would be, you can put up any sign you like that conforms to the two-by-two size that Danny illustrated for us, that goes up no sooner than six o'clock or so on Thursday, and has to be down by four o'clock on Saturday, that allows the garage sale signs, and I think it calls out a lot of the objectionable signs that we simply would not, as a practical matter, get anymore, because it wouldn't serve the purposes of those people with those kinds of signs. So, I suggest that to the council as a possible solution for this.
Wouldn't that dilute the public safety issue that we're trying to uphold by not allowing signs in the, uh, right-of-way?
Yes, you're right.
Now, we're saying there's no public safety issue Thursday through Sunday, but there's a public safety issue Monday through Wednesday, and it's the same street, so I don't, I don't...
There's more cars on the road Thursday through...
Oh, sure. And, and Rich has got a valid point.
So, I, I, my concern about that would be the fact that it would cause us not to be able to enforce what we're trying to enforce.
I totally agree with Rich's point, it's just that it is such a shame to no longer have, I mean, we can have garage sale signs, but they're going to be removed from the road, and the most popular corner for signs in town, which is Taco John's, probably won't have any.
Rich, I think, if we, as a consistent, as the council has been in looking for accident material or statistics, then if, before we make the decision, should ask the police department for, uh, accident statistics before we could make that judgment on if it is infecting the public safety. That's a perception. If you want cold, hard facts, then we need to look at the statistics and accident reports.
I don't know how you could tie that together, but maybe you could.
Wasn't there something in here, though, where some courts have looked at that, and did anyone else read that? And they've made some, to come to some conclusion?
Well, that I think it's, courts have found that it's reasonable for municipalities to try to protect traffic safety by eliminating distractions in the road right-of-way. That it, the ordinance doesn't require, as a matter of law, to have some sort of statistical factual basis for making that conclusion, that that's a reasonable conclusion to make without accident reports and so forth. I mean, there's two, there's several things you're trying to accomplish in clearing the right-of-way, traffic safety, traffic or right-of-room, right-of-way maintenance, mowing, you just, the roads and the road right-of-way can be used just for the purposes for which it's there, which is traffic, and then the public works activity, maintenance, and so forth, without having to move signs. The other is the proliferation and the visual clutter created by signs in the right-of-way.
I'm not, I'm not, um, I don't think moving a sign from four feet in to ten feet in is, should be a grave concern. I don't, I don't think six feet is gonna make a difference. I think the signs can still be seen, even political signs. When I campaigned, I didn't put any of my signs in the right-of-way, 'cause I just thought I couldn't. I guess I just assumed you shouldn't. And everyone saw my signs, or at least enough people did.
Well, you're here.
Right. That's my point, that, you know, and someone asked me, why aren't you putting it closer? I said, well, I can see it when I drive by. I don't, I don't think six feet, I mean, my dad is six-one, you know, it's not that, it can be, you know, it's not that extreme, six feet. People are assuming that they could be four feet prior.
May I just, and I don't know if this is, um, anything that we can do, or if the council would be willing to do it, but thinking about the temporary off-premise signs, um, well, let me ask this first. The temporary on-premise signs for special events, so a business has a special event, and they're allowed up to ten days to have the sign, including two weekends, advertising that grand opening or whatever it is. I mean, could we not extend the forty-eight hours on the off-premise signs? Well, let's see. So, garage sale would be considered an on-premise, non-commercial?
Well, they might, they'll have a sign, I'm sure, on their, they're, and they're allowed to, on their, where the sale's...
They're only allowed forty-eight hours before.
Uh, no, the on-premise, I think, just give me a second, um, ten days before their garage sale, they can have a sign on their property.
Total or non-commercial? Okay, okay, I missed.
So, that was also extended, and it's kind of the trade-off, that, okay, you can advertise your event on your property.
For a longer period of time.
For ten days before.
Mm-hmm.
But when we're getting to the off-premise, we wanted to keep it narrow.
Okay.
Lee, Lee, do you have anything?
I'm sorry, I just went someplace else.
Welcome back.
But anyhow, the, um, public, one of the public sa, one of the first things we looked at, and we started considering, thinking about traffic safety, it was these flashing lights. I mean, it was the, the flashing LEDs, the brightness of the LEDs, I mean, that's what we started in the whole conversation.
No, it's non, actually.
How often does it flash? How, how distracted is it for the driver that drives by? Um, and I, I kind of, um, somebody brought up to me, they said, you know, if you take the sign that's closer to the corner you can read, and you move it back fifteen feet, and you still have eight or ten of them on the corner, you are still, now you're actually causing a bigger problem, because you gotta slow down longer to read them. So, I think that, you know, putting them on private property also creates more of a safety issue because they're harder to see, as a, just a consideration when we're looking at safety issues. Okay, Scott?
What about making off-premise, uh, signs conform to what we do with political? That it's not one per parcel, it is one per parcel, except if you have a corner lot, it is one on each face, street face, so that there can be two. If you have a corner lot, there can be two, one facing north, or for instance, and one facing east, so that drivers can see them. We do that already.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's...
It's already there, I think, isn't it?
We, I don't know that we did it for the off-premise.
I read this, and I didn't see it.
Yeah, we did it, let's...
Good point.
It is a good point.
I just didn't happen to see it when I...
We have it somewhere else.
We, I've seen it somewhere.
Maybe in the sale of real estate? But I think that, I mean, I, I'm not just trying to be difficult, I think that's a reasonable, because what we're trying to avoid is the clutter and a, one lot having tons of signs, but two per frontage, I think, would be a reasonable compromise.
But the problem we're trying to solve, and we've gotten into a lot of other ones, another problem we're trying to solve was, we pick up an enforcement issue, which we just talked about earlier, signs stay up and they don't come down. So, that concept of, um, the enforcement and the fines to say... So that concept of the enforcement and the fines to say, every sign needs to have name, address, hours it's going to be up, I don't care if it's a real estate sign or any other kind of sign. We should know where it is and who owns it, and to be able to go out there and pick it up and cover our expenses by applying a fine for violating the rule. It seems like as far as, you know, this is costing us money, that certainly is a recoup if we're, if we're having to pick up signs and dispose of them.
So are you suggesting signs in the right-of-way?
Whether it's a sign in the right, yeah, I would not, I would also suggest that, but I think that part of our biggest problem when we started into this, as Danny pointed out, was enforcement. Picking up hundreds of signs on Monday morning is frankly silly, you know, with irresponsible people. As soon as you start looking at fines, you're instilling responsibility in that this is your sign, you own it, you pick it up, you clean up after yourself.
Rich, you haven't said anything, or you have any comments?
Well, I've come into the discussion a little bit late. This has been going on for a year, as I understand it, and you guys have hashed around a lot of issues. I spent a while trying to read this, and it was very entertaining. I enjoyed it immensely. And so I, I don't have a lot of the background that many of the council members do, but I am concerned about public safety in the right-of-ways, and from my standpoint, I'd be in favor of this because it does help public safety in my mind. I don't think we should take a potential safety issue, and in my mind, it is a potential safety issue, and ignore it until something happens. So I think we should be proactive as a council and do something about it ahead of time before we run over a dog, or unfortunately, maybe some child that runs between signs or does something else. So I've read it and heard the current discussion and feel that we need to do something.
Randy, anything else?
Not yet.
Okay. Mary?
With, sorry, no, I'm.
Lori?
Electronic signs, are they going to be, are existing electronic signs going to be grandfathered in? Or because of these moratorium, moratoria that we've had in place, does that protect them from being grandfathered? I read something in here that suggested.
I believe they have to, they have to come in to the ordinance, they have to come into align with the ordinance.
Do we have any electronic signs that are taller than what's in here?
No.
Okay, so it may be a matter of modifying the message.
The discussion Catherine and I had is that they would be required to be brought in to conformance where possible. Some of the signs may not have dimming considerations, but probably the biggest provision would be the four-second phasing consideration. And we'll have to send out letters informing these businesses that have signs that what those considerations are, so.
So they can advertise on, on-premise advertising?
Correct.
Time, temperature, and it said, non-commercial speech? Okay, so they can't advertise for another business? It just has to be like.
And my understanding was they are adjustable in terms of frequency, most of these signs are. So they'd be, if they're not in conformity now, they'd be able to set them, so they would be.
I have a question.
So the sign down, the bank sign downtown can't talk about APR rates anymore, it could lose the time and date.
Well, that's on-premise advertising, it's, yeah, they're rates.
But it's a, it's a scrolling sign, I thought in here, so if it's.
That's correct, and there's some scrolling considerations, phasing, there'd be some modifications they have to make to meet that.
A question for Catherine, on page 16 in chapter seven about electronic message display signs. Excuse me, 7A says that they are just, electronic signs are prohibited in the historic district of the B3 central district, and there are none there now, so it's not a problem. Further down the page, in subparagraph F, it talks about how you can get a conditional use permit for an electronic sign. Do we need to end that sentence by tacking on the words something like accepting, you know, you can get a conditional permit, but not in the historic district of the B3 central business district? Because someone could, under F, subchapter, or subparagraph F, apply for a conditional use permit right in that historic district, unless we say they can't.
Unless A takes care of it, Scott, I don't.
I don't know, that's my question. Does A sweepingly take care of everything? Or can somebody say, hey, well, no, it says I can get a conditional permit here?
Okay, that's a good point.
I thought if we just clarify, say, no, you can't in this historic district, thank you. Any other issues?
I just have a clarification question, and I probably should have, I'm sure I read it, and I don't remember, and I just want to, since I can't find it fast enough, I want to ask. Signs that are not electronic that are around town, that are on people's businesses, like gas station signs and stuff like that, for example, that are, those. Yeah, thank you. Those can, are also not allowed to advertise for other businesses than.
So now we've come up with a couple ideas, are we trying to craft this or send it back?
Sure, Congress, Council of Congress, you want to do tonight?
And then I guess, I mean, Danny, of all the things that you have to do, this is probably certainly not what you're going to want to chase after, as busy as you are or have been up there. And then you honestly think that under section 202-10B2, you're going to send someone to the county jail for a garage sale sign?
No, that's if they don't pay for forfeitures.
What page are you on?
Page 24.
Yeah, that's pretty standard in all our.
A judge would have to make that decision.
That's, well, the law authorizes, does not authorize jail for violation, only for non-payment of forfeiture. So that goes in as a possible remedy if they don't pay the forfeiture. It's up to the municipal court to decide whether to impose that.
What I'm getting at is, I think it's pretty excessive for.
Well, that's where the judge, that's not my call, that's the judge's call. Hopefully, the judge would feel the same way.
Well, I don't recall there being forfeitures issued for garage sale signs. I thought we were just discussing that we wouldn't issue forfeitures for garage.
Well, no, we can't.
Yeah, we're just going to.
We can also pick them up when the property owner, where the sign is located, can just take them down.
Right, we're not, it's going to be issued.
But the biggest problem is we're trying to make these garage sales, we're going to have to vote too there.
Well, Randy, this deals with forfeiture of fines, there are no fines.
Well, no, that's not true. There are fines, I mean, forfeitures are a possible remedy.
Okay, but not for garage sales.
Not for garage sale signs.
Well, it's a possible remedy, whether the city, the whole point of this, if it's on the private property, it's very unlikely that the city's going to have to go out and issue citations because the property owner can just say, you know what, I don't want that sign on my property anymore.
And now if it's in the boulevard, we don't really say how much they're going to get fined when we pick it up. And we're not going to pick them up on weekends because we don't have that on weekends working.
Well, I guess, yeah, talk to.
Oh, we have public works and parks working on the weekends.
Sure.
Year-round.
Some of these guys do it, and I do, but.
Yes, Lori?
If I may, I just want to kind of go back to how this all started because I think sometimes we lose track of it, you know, in the minutia of the details. There were a lot of complaints coming in from people in my district and others about off-premise signs, signs down on Second Street, advertising for businesses off of Second Street. It wasn't just electronic signs that prompted this. But we issued a moratorium, and then we asked, Danny, please look into this, let's look at the sign policy comprehensively, not just fix one section. So that's how we got where we are, and sometimes these things are sort of uncomfortable because we end up stepping on some toes, and you get to things like garage sale signs. You know, we asked for this, and, you know, this is kind of where the rubber meets the road, and we just have to decide, is it something that we want to do as a city to clean up signs in the right-of-way as part of the overall policy? I think we've had Danny in an awkward position of having a policy that was basically unenforceable. You want to talk about a lot of work, you just create complaints from people, and we don't really have a good explanation as to why we're not enforcing it. This is going to allow us to at least enforce it. That's all.
Okay.
I agree with Lori that this is a, I believe, a very finely crafted ordinance. Danny's put a lot of work into it, so has Catherine, and frankly, so have we. And I think we are never going to achieve perfection. I would like to do more for garage sales, but I understand that there is a greater good. So I'll vote yes for it. We don't need to do anything tonight if we want to discuss it more, but I think it's a pretty good document the way it is.
With the modifications.
With the brilliant modification I suggested to you, yeah.
So would this be considered a second reading?
I think we did have first reading.
We had a first read already.
Public hearing, and I think.
We had a first.
I think it was a first reading, I didn't double check.
Well, I will move for, with those changes we discussed, adoption, unless you, do you wish Catherine to come back with something in writing instead?
I'm, I'm, we can do whatever the council pleases. Let's just make sure we have the modifications, that historical district one. And then I also wrote down.
Two sides.
The per frontage.
Per frontage, sure.
Page 22D1, and the multiple family, well, we could even do it in the R1 and R2, I suppose.
I think that'd be fine.
Per lot, per street frontage, because that's consistent with other sections of the ordinance.
Yep, so with those, those modifications, I will move for adoption of ordinance. Shoot, we've got so many different numbers on these things.
Two-dash-eleven.
Okay, two-dash-eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
And with this, basically, certainly making it very, very, very difficult for anybody, for people to have a decent garage sale. And have, because they're not going to get permission from somebody on a corner for the sign in the yard, and if it is, it'll be one. The, we made modifications.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries for the two. Is there any other business for tonight? Yes, sir.
Next council meeting, we will need to set, sunsetting the moratorium on electronic signs. So I'll have Catherine, I'll prepare something we can do. This ordinance would be published and effective somewhere towards the end of February, so perhaps February 28th or whatever date we would propose would give consideration to sunsetting the moratorium on electronic signs.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.